Great, our meeting's in order. We don't have minutes to review yet, so we're gonna focus on that till the next meeting. Next on the agenda, we have two interunions of agreements that we need to and you discuss. One is the dispatch memo, memo amendment stating Tom Woodstock.
Yeah, but nothing has changed in that agreement from the last agreement that we signed last year. I don't know if you remember last year, we had kind of a back and forth a little bit with our attorneys in regards to when were they bonded?
Yeah.
Uh, I think it was like the in, gonna, Asian one.
Yeah.
Um, so all the attorneys agreed on language, but the
Exact same.
Exactly.
And the same amount.
Okay.
For the next two years.
Correct.
Yes, good. Right, um. We discussed all the same language last year.
Exactly.
I'll make a motion that we agree to the MLU with our dispatch. So, and then the next one is the prosecutor agreement. With Hampton Lincoln Woodstock, Holderness in Waterville Valley.
Yes, and so the only change that that is, is that our amount due to the town of Camden went down slightly by $1,000. Um, that's because uh, with the addition of now Holderness in the
Oh, that's why I saw that on the budget.
So, Holderness is um, a new addition to the regional prosecutor. Waterville came on last year. Holderness is coming on this year, so it made our share, they did uh, it's the prosecutor, a uh, salary increase, but because of bringing Holderness on, our share
Perfect.
Other than that, the language is like
And I think our prosecutor does a great job. I assume PD is, they're buried in those days, and they're fine with sort of organizing this. I know that they work everybody.
Correct.
But Camden plus the money.
Yep, and
Are they technically an employee?
Oh, she is a full-time employee at the town, so they carry her health insurance and her benefits and all that type of stuff. Uh, I do think she's spending a little bit more time up here now in the PD.
Because she has an office.
She has an office, you know, if we're not fully a chair. Okay.
All in favor? Then we'll be ready to move right onto the budget.
Um, we, we are. Um, before we start getting into the NITI grade, though, there are a couple um, things I want to talk about that are budget related, but um, they're not in the budget yet, so I guess I need the board's guidance or
You didn't have any, um, I know you didn't do a did you have anything you needed to bring to us before?
Uh, no, I mean, I do have some non-public stuff, but nothing uh, nothing in public at the time. Do you want to address what's in the envelope of folder, or you go?
Um, I have five things I want to bring up, something. After, or whatever, but just say we get the budget done, we done.
Yeah, I mean, we can do that. Or okay. I would think that we could go through, I mean, maybe not the whole thing, but at least a good chunk of it tonight, as much as we could, or as much as you're all willing to do, three or six numbers.
All right, do you want to get some of the other things out of the way first? All right. So, this is from a town clerk. I'm gonna summarize it a little bit. I found out from other towns that clerk works. The software can set up an inventory, just like they do for dog licenses, with the transfer station stickers, and we can keep a reportable record of all issued stickers and the owner's name, vehicle, and plate number. Quite a few towns have stated that the town clerk's office vets the resident and issues up to two stickers per address, and all this is kept track of in the clerk work software. It prints the receipt with the sticker plate number. Um, that verification receipt is then taken to the transfer station, where the transfer station employee will physically affix sticker to the vehicle listed on the receipt. So it's something that can do this online. Pay for it online, print out the receipt, go to the transfer station. Um, this allows the clerk to verify the
I don't know how, if that's the case, then how are she vetting their
No, I know, so I guess they can't do it online. She gets It is, it can be done online. Same way a dog, what, that is how other, other towns do it. And, uh, cause I spoke to Kristy, cause I wasn't sure either. She said, similar to like, um, getting your dog license online, whatever, and then she mail them, or you pick it up. So that's how
Okay.
They hear. So they do it online, but then she vets. Correct. And has to pick it up, all right. Sometimes then charge a fee between 20 and 25 dollars. But up to two additional decals. Um, placement decals can be, replacement ones can be $2, which voids the previous one that they had. Or can be, you can note cost if they broke their windshield or purchased a trade-in. And she did say that there's no cost, additional cost, as they're even software, so adding this would add any cost.
Yeah.
We have the clerk work software. Correct. So this is just Another link. Another service that goes Correct. Yeah, and she did put a call up to Julie. She said she heard from you, oh, and, and gave you the deposit.
Yeah, I think if we're gonna do it, we should be in tandem with Woodstock.
Holding them. Yeah.
Cause there's no point for them to do it.
We're not, right, right.
My only concern with that is that because her office is only open three days a week, that we end up giving out transfer station stickers too, and then we wouldn't be able to do so, because we don't have access to the clerk work system. We just have to tell them to go online.
Well, I don't think it would add any more than she's already doing, because now you have to come in anyway and get it, you can't do anything.
No, I'm just saying, we issue them, like we, on, on a Tuesday or Thursday when she
Is that what you're doing, is that what you're doing now?
If someone comes in on a Tuesday or Thursday.
Oh, and you can't get into her, like now you can, but if it went on clerk work, then you couldn't.
Correct.
So, even if someone didn't want a dump sticker, the ladies bathtub, they wanted it to the dump. You do that now, but wouldn't be able to do that.
We wouldn't be able to do it in the future, because we wouldn't be able to have access to the clerk work system. We'd have to direct them to the website and then until she vets them.
Yeah, well, yeah.
They wouldn't be able to walk out with
I gotcha.
On the day that she won't walk out.
So maybe it's not a good solution.
You know?
Is there a problem now?
No.
I don't think so. I think it's just, I think she was just offering a solution if we wanted a, a different way to track things.
Yeah, we don't know many major problems right now, so let's evolve and evolve.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think it's a bad thing. I just like, I said, that's the only
Right.
question that we had is, how would that we issue that?
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's customer ship.
That is a good point. That's a good point.
Yeah. That was my only concern.
All right. Perfect, thank you. I have a couple of things from the planning board meeting that need to turn up, report, cast, or whatever. Um, number one, the um, report we got on the sewer capacity study says that right now we're not even at half capacity, but with everything that's been vested, we're, we're projected triggering that 80%. And um, my understanding is DES doesn't care what we've vested or whatever. We're nowhere near it, so they're fine.
Correct.
Gotcha. Our, our question is knowing that we're gonna trigger it just with what we have built, does the board have any other, does the town have any
Wait a minute, trigger with what we already have built?
Well, we already have approved.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Approved.
Was confused.
Right. What, what authority do we have to guide, well, someone comes in with a hundred, 200, 400 unit project. There's room right now, so we're, but we know that, that it'll put it over that 80%. Do we have to do that? Could we, could we slow growth down? But what, what is our, what are our options? And I think I want to get a legal opinion on that.
Well, I think one thing, if I made the judgment, would be, we're gonna be working on an impact, so if someone's gonna drive us over 80%, that's impact. And they can be made to pay for that. Uh, you know, obviously we get attorneys involved with that. Before, you know, impose it, but by the same token, I assess that it was impacted. We know, like, somebody went up the floor, the story side, that was an impact on the PD, it gave it a quiet, but it was not paid for, but it never did. But, you know, uh, something like that, I guess we're, we're, we help, it's not the solution for this.
I get it. We already have an impact being on sewer.
Right.
It's, it was in one, but, but particularly talking about the sewer issue here, we have an impact fee. Um, that's something that the impact fee will certainly look at, see. But if, if someone's tried to put this, you know, the one gallon over the, the limit, you can't have them buy it. So I guess my question is, you know, what, what rights do we have, what are we looking at? I don't even know. I don't even know what questions we have. Um, is that something that either Jason and NHMA give us guidance?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would assume, I know that when we talked about this, you know, a few months back, you know, I looked into the moratoriums and they're can't really do that, um, building one unless you're in crisis.
Right, and generally it's a one-year
Yeah.
thing.
It's not like
Possibly gonna be extended, but
And I, I think, you know, I talked to Ray Horver about it, because I asked him that specific question, like, what does DES care about? What does BDA, they, they care about stubble in the ground. They don't care about hypothetical vetting or approvals or whatnot. Um, I mean, could we get legal opinion from, like I said, I, I don't think NHMA is gonna offer us the specific kind of guidance that we need, you know, the path forward. They're gonna give us more generic terms and uh, it may be something that we want to uh, look into the Jason, knowing that could be something in the future in the future.
Is there some type of a formula uh, that comes up with gallons that, uh, you know, the system can handle? And then going over that gallonage, you know, based on bedroom size, foot footage, or whatever the case might be. Uh, that would trigger, uh, you know, uh, a need, okay, we're gonna reach 80% when this development's, uh, that development is gonna improve. I don't know that.
Um, I mean, we know right now right here, but with the allocated capacity, projected, projected average daily flow is estimated, estimated to be 82% of the design capacity. And just over 100% of the threshold regular period date. So if we approve no projects, like for the next 20 years, we said, no, it's not, it's posing matters theoretically, we said this, that when everything that is on the list to be built is built, we will just then trigger the
You have to reach out to DES.
DES, we, all we have to do is let them know that we're at the and that we're working towards some solution before we get to the, to the end of that. So, you know, I think where, and again, that's based on projected, it's gonna really depend on you know, if it's, if it's homes like we're building now, where people aren't up here often enough to uh, whatever, tell you just with, with daily flow.
So you believe that Ray Horver is conservative in his numbers, and he bases them off of 12 months a year occupancy and normal average daily usage, because, you know
Because they all have the rights to meet the 12 months a year, right, so that's the way to do it. Um, but we might not reach that even while developing.
Correct.
But I also know that we can't just stop developing.
No.
But I didn't know if it was anything like allotments or or is there anything besides an impact fee that we should discuss?
Well, I think, and I think the thing, we're talking about this, um, is like putting explorations and deadlines on site plan, I mean subdivisions and whatnot, that you lose your right to build, right to build, you lose your vettedness as far
Place in line.
Yeah, place in line, if you don't have substantial completion or built or shovel on the ground, or whatever the language says, I can't remember exactly, but um, after five years, seven years, whatever it is, you, you get removed from that vested rights.
I can run that by Jason and just, like, like, just whipped to have a conversation with him? Can he just answer it like, no, you can't do anything? I mean, I don't even
Yeah.
All right. That was my easy question. Gee, the, the planning board is looking at ordinance changes. And there's numerous things that came um, from the state, changes in the state law that are requiring us to make some changes. Um, one is House Bill 631. Um, which requires municipalities to allow multi-family residential development on commercially, commercially zoned land, provided that adequate infrastructure is available to support the development throughout and so, so that's not an issue. Um, there are some zones um, yeah, we don't allow multi- res, multi-family residential, commercial, I mean, sort of multi-family residential on, which we're gonna have to change that. I think we can still, um, uh, restrict it from the industrial
Okay.
Yeah. Um, but not from we have two zones where it's not allowed. Have to get where they are. One is rural residential and
Yeah.
All right, we need, um, we need to change our, our ordinance related to that. Yeah, I think the planning board is able to do that. The second one, though, we want some input, because we're in existing buildings being repurposed for adaptive reuse for residential purposes. Municipalities are required to afford exemptions to setbacks type of frontage of a building, provided the dimensional elements of the building do not change. So someone's taking a building that's a commercial use, not making it bigger, not higher, not wider, um, that we, we are required to afford its exemptions to the setbacks, high frontage, and to allow them to, to, again, not expand the building for change uses it. We just want to find the language that we need to, to do that. Is that something that Jason?
Yeah, I watched the planning board meeting, and I, uh, I already spoke to Paul about it, and I created a tracking sheet, and I gave some definitions and some um, things that we will need guidance on from legal and think that we can, we can define ourselves.
Okay.
The state has already given guidance from, whether it's state definition or whatnot, so I did forward that to Paul, um, last week, so he has that two persons.
Oh, all right, so
Okay, parking, the, the parking issue.
Okay.
Uh, we have to change our landing schedule.
There was a, um, a term called floor area ratio.
Yes, that's for us, that thing, that's not for us. We don't
Okay, yeah, I, I, my question was, is that even relevant in our
It's not, no.
Okay, um, the extended vesting start and completion time, we'll have to change that, but again
Correct.
That it has started. And then the change of ADU um, accessible building units of detached accessible buildings in all, in all zones.
Correct, yeah. I gave Paul already, um, the definitions of state use as far as ADU, because we don't even have a definition for ADU.
Okay.
We have accessory apartment, so I think, uh, in the tracking sheet that I, I, I gave to him, I would, I suggested the leading accessory apartment and using the state's definition of attached and decap, except for your own units and whatnot. Yeah, I, like, I, I watched the meeting and I, um, started the tracking sheet, so we can, I'll think that we, we change. I know that another question from the planning board was, um, if the state's mandating that all these things change, do we even have a forum to town meeting? And I did speak to Jason in regards to that, because we were all on about something else last week. Um, and he said he was gonna look into it a little bit. He says, technically, he thinks, yes, because it's cleaner, so you can follow and track all the changes that are made within our loophole. So what do we do if it's voted down? Well, and that's what I said to him. I said, I use parking as an example, I said, this town, a lot, a lot ticket item is parking, and so if, um, it's being proposed to reduce the number of parking places, our community might not want that, and they might vote against it. And so he was gonna look into mechanisms for us in the event something like that happened. Whether it's language being put on the warrant article on the ballot, that says these are state mandated changes, or it's some other mechanism that we, we have to follow, we don't have a choice. Um, so I didn't speak to him about that.
Okay.
Okay.
When you talked about the ADU, you see the issue that came out through the common man, they're gonna run three seminars at the three different common mans.
Oh, yeah.
So, the one here in Lincoln, so that like
Yeah, Jay's participating in that, and he, he kind of said, we go through the building process, people who have any questions in regards to it again.
Sure.
Excellent. Um, and then the last thing was, um, was requested for the land applications to the planning board.
Okay, I will say I have somewhat concerns with that, due to the confidential nature of hiring personnel. Um, I, it would have to be, um, they, they couldn't address them in a public session.
So you have to speak with Jason.
My concern is if, if I applied for a job, and I didn't want anyone else to know that I'm applying for this, you know, my current employer, my neighbor, or um, do we adapt them? Do we, talk to Jason about, I, I mean, I don't want to get in trouble somewhere on the planning board.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm not distributing red, red, red names. I mean, if we wanted for our conversation, maybe about the top, you know, shortlist of top applicants or something, you know, something along those lines. Like, I would need a little bit of guidance, but like, they're not for public disclosure at this, at this moment, you know? Um, I think there's some personnel loss, a huge
All right. Yeah, no.
So I'll, I'll, I'll try to figure out a course of action for that.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
Figure out what we can do to
Yeah.
To help, but not break the law.
Right.
All right, um, the water project up for new grid.
Yes.
They made
I did have that on.
Tremendous progress, but they're not done.
They're not gonna be done, and the state is shutting them down on Thursday, and they are not allowed to resume work, and the state has said that they are not allowed to cut into the, uh
Exogram?
Experence.
That's what I was afraid of, so it looks like if they could cross that exogram one day
Yeah.
That they finish the project. Is anything else important?
Absolutely. The state tried to shut them down last week. Um, they actually did shut them down last week, and then we had, um, a powwow with the state and the police, and they extended it until this Thursday, and they said, absolutely, there is no progress being made after this Thursday, and they do not want them coming into the experence at this, at this state agency.
When can they resume? Next week. They didn't work today, or they didn't do
They, they couldn't work today. They shut them down, they can only be Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday this week because
They didn't last Friday, I'm bothered. There was no snow, wasn't snowing. I know Nate had told me they stopped them for the same day before, and it was snowing. Um, but I couldn't understand why they weren't working.
Because they're mandating that they close up the pavement, um, every day at the end of the workday. There's something to do with the asphalt thing, and they couldn't do what they needed to do on Friday, and also get a paving company in there to close it up for the weekend, is what I believe that.
Okay, no, but I was just shocked that they weren't there for the weather stage.
So Nate and I do have a meeting with Sam Penny to discuss what sort of penalty or, um, fee, or what sort of provisions are gonna be provided by the police or imposed by us, um, because they chose to bring it down to the wire.
I understand, the state shut them down, they don't have a choice, they can't, but they had, I mean, they had all, they had all year to do it, and chose to do it at the 11th hour and
And they will not make the 150 day mark.
Right.
So there's definitely going to be some sort of, um, penalty, fee, reduction, something along those lines that I think we have.
Are you gonna meet with the campus well people?
I'm at, at NHMA on Wednesday and Thursday, but, um, I did, I don't know if someone emailed George.
I did not.
Um, I, I can't, um, but I, um, I have put some things together as far as creating a district, whatever it entails, and kind of a, a, a how-to guide that I was gonna share at some point um, with the board and opposite of them, because we, we, there's definitely some moves I'm gonna jump through, that's something that we're gonna be doing.
All right, can you give them some guidelines on
Um, timelines, yes.
That's what they really want.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, all mine, so. If no one has anything else, we'll go to the budget. All right, let's do the budget.
Um, a couple of things in regards to the budget, like you said, before we start getting into the NITI grade and the line item stuff, um, so we, um, we sat down, Nate and I sat down with H2O Innovations last week, and we, um, got the updated cost figure for the testing, now that we've all looked at the, um, our new NITI's permit for the sewer treatment facility, uh, what that was gonna entail and the testing. Um, Paul, who was our operator down there, was, um, I would say fairly confident that we are gonna meet our testing guidelines without having to make a lot of, um, modifications.
Wow.
Um, so, I mean
That's good news.
That's good news. Um, you know, obviously there's gonna have to be some modification.
Sure.
I'm fairly confident that we can meet, um, most of the, uh, the criteria that are really important in the NITI's permit.
Right.
Um, with that said, though, the new estimate for testing that we will be required to do now, starting next February, um, is $50,000 a year. Um, if you remember, last year, we, um, got a quote, it was like 43 or 40 something and change, and we decided that we were gonna put like half of it into the budget, because we thought we weren't gonna have to do it right off the bat and do the whole year's work. We were fortunate, unfortunately, we didn't have to do anything, because we just recently got the new permit. Um, so right now, um, in that line item under contract services, if we're sewer, um, Nate has a pretty big surplus, so I was thinking, I was gonna recommend to the board that maybe we encumber the $15,000 that we put in there for testing this year to bring it over to next year, so we're only raising it 35 versus the whole day.
Well, yeah.
Um, that would be under the sewer budget. Yes, we put contracted services, we put it, uh, we put $15,000 in there last year, um, and having spent a significant portion of it, so I would recommend that we encumber that 15, so we only have to raise 35.
And then put 35, yeah, instead of 50.
Instead of the 50, yeah. That's a good idea. Um, I reached the formal vote from the board during some of those funds.
Before we didn't do that tonight.
You don't need to do it tonight, but we need to do it before the end 20.
I said, we typically encumber other funds.
Yes.
But we don't know what those are until like, usually the last meeting.
Okay, yeah.
I'm, I'm in favor of doing that, but we should wait and see if we have others to encumber, do it all at once.
Okay. Do you want me to talk about another conference right now, or you want me?
Okay. Yeah, sure.
Okay, um, uh, also, um, okay, so we, uh, received a quote for, uh, Also, um okay, so we uh received a quote for uh removing all of our um assessing software. We moved the tax collect software to Avatar last year. We have the assessing shell that we've been using, but it's still just a work through. We're still doing everything in vision. Then it goes to the assessing shell, so we then can communicate with the tax collect program. Uh we uh had a meeting with Avatar and they gave us an updated quote for the assessing uh full program, not just the shell. And also after speaking with Cindy, um there are some conversion issues from going from Vision to Avatar. Mainly the biggest one are the uh footprints of the um each of the individual buildings. They need to be manually inputted. They can't do an automatic transfer. So Avatar gave us a quote on what that would cost them to do it and they gave us a very fair quote of a dollar a sketch, um which I think is super reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
Um so that is seventeen thousand dollars to get into that new Avatar uh assessing program. Um we so uh had a meeting with um MRI and our payroll software. We're updating our payroll software. Um we're going from employer on the go to another entity. They work with a company called Timecard Plus, which would allow us to do all of our time cards electronically. And they could be an app on your phone or a app that you click into different things. So we wouldn't have to be dealing with papered time cards anymore, which are kind of a nightmare for Becky. Um that program and the implementation is um fourteen thousand dollars. Um the annual would only be four grand, but the one time implementation and buy the equipment and whatnot. So um I was looking at places in the budget where we could potentially encumber funds to pay for those uh this year's budget versus putting them in twenty sixteen budget. Um and my recommendation, because we are very low on legal right now, um would be to take money from the legal budget and move it to the uh executive budget, um contracted services, so we could purchase those this year.
What page to what page?
Um it would be legal is um one hundred and four. And if you look and see, we.
Oh, yeah.
We've only spent thirty six out of the hundred and fifteen budgeted. So that would be my recommendation on where we would transfer those funds from. But again, doesn't need to be voted on tonight, but just kind of throwing it out there. Since they're not those, those expenses are not included in our budget by any of those.
All right, I see in the executive budget, the MRI payroll. And NHRS services for fifteen thousand dollars.
That is what we pay on a monthly basis for them to do our retention retirement reporting.
Okay, so where where are these two things? Where are those two expenses?
They're not in that.
They're not in right now.
Oh, all right.
That's that's the whole point.
She'd like to put them in.
I'd like to put them in. Well, if we don't encumber the funds, I will have to put them in next year if the board agrees with their work.
Gotcha.
Which I think. It.
Go in the executive budget with everyone tax lunch budget.
The assessing would go in assessing. We go in the executive.
Executive, okay.
Tax collector's already had hers last year and we did hers last year.
Gotcha. So the, oh, I see. Assessing shell, gotcha. Okay. So that's the seventeen, so it would be the seventeen.
When you see assess, oh, assessing shell.
So the seventeen uh would be to just transfer it, pay for it this year. So then you we would add, would it add any more to that Avatar assessing line item? Or would that still remain forty five hundred?
It does remain five, forty five hundred.
So that remained, so that would go there. And then if we put in the um fourteen for the time cards.
Yes.
Um.
Uh we have no expenses next year. We wouldn't have expenses until the following year.
And then it would be four thousand a year at today's price.
Correct.
Gotcha. Um okay, so the MRI payroll stuff, that fifteen would stay because that's not, that's an addition. That's the retirement and all that stuff. Okay, gotcha. So. Would that one just go up to nineteen next year theoretically? Would you put in a whole nother payroll?
I'd probably put like a time card plus line. You could see exactly what we're spending on.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I think it's a good idea to um use money we already have for things that we need um to not affect the tax rate next year.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That'd be my thought except, yeah, no, these are, I think they're worthwhile. I mean, that's something we have to do. We're already, we're already halfway there.
Right, that's been a project we're gonna be working on.
We've been working on over the last couple of years. Time card plus, I think, is not a necessity, but I think with how complex things are getting with the future retirement and with our our current payroll.
It's a much better way to track.
It's a much better way to track and I think we would have the better.
It's still submitted by department heads. It's a still review.
It's still reviewed.
Right.
Old software system hand in hand, so.
Right, um.
Again, like it doesn't need to be a decision.
We could make it today and then you could have it all done and paid for before the end of the year.
Yeah, I just don't want to forget about it, to be honest, you know? I don't think we're in jeopardy of spending our whole legal budget next month.
Don't.
Yeah, right, you better just.
I know, I'm not gonna get by my own shots. Good God.
All right.
Any others?
Nope, that's all I have for the income.
So put those on your reminders page.
Remind us, Jamie.
So now we can actually start.
Now we can start on the budget. Um will we start right from the top?
Definitely.
Okay, so I am proposing a three percent cola across the board. Uh if we saw um SSI came in at two point eight, I make that and made it a flat brief across the board for all the employees. Yeah. Um you're gonna see in that first line item, the full time of the wages under executive, it actually only looks like we went up one percent. That was because we previously, uh before, um my uh Michael Newton was our fire chief. He was our health officer, so we had an executive, uh some money in the executive budget for health officer. Now that he is our fire chief and the health officer, I think it's just all appropriate to move that all towards the five.
Exactly. What is it? Looks like a licensed official who has seven percent.
Um I don't know why that was. I think it's because we uh gave our treasurer last year a bump.
Oh, right.
And it wasn't the full year. We did it midstream.
Yeah.
I would've given a couple months into it, so if it looks like it's higher than we presented across the board, which is encompassing the the bump we already gave the last year.
Gotcha. I like the decrease in the telephone.
Decrease in telephone looks good. That number is still subject to change. We just met, uh not to go up, it might go down. Uh we just signed on the statewide to change over all.
Right, 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 yeah.
Um and we haven't been using, obviously utilizing the downstairs, there's no calls downstairs as of yet, but I think that's a safe number for right now. Perfect. Um you know, cell phones, I bumped it up to eight dollars just to make it flat numbers. Uh the telephone line of the service did the same and um charter did go up slightly and that's because we are now being uh charged a higher rate for all of our hotlines.
It says it's up four percent, but three hundred dollars is a four percent or seven thousand.
Yeah, it's up three hundred and fifty bucks.
Right, but that's not four percent.
Well, no, seventy five bucks would be one percent.
Yeah.
Okay, so it is.
It is. Never.
Yep.
Well, he's on one.
Um. Uh dues, trainings, travels, conferences, that went up by ten dollars just because um our, one of our um dues went up by ten, by ten dollars if I'm not mistaken. But again, remaining relatively.
Yeah, one went down forty.
One went down forty, yeah.
Yeah.
So net of ten dollars.
Perfect.
Uh contracted services, um I brought down the the town report rating just slightly just because we haven't spent that much over the last few years and I think we can do it for the forty five hundred. Um I haven't met, um everything else is pretty much basically flat, as you'll see. I have, you'll see that I have certified computers highlighted. I'm meeting with Katie um from Certified on Thursday to get the firmer numbers for twenty six, so I have to have those updated. Uh I just put them, the flat numbers in as placeholders for now. I I imagine there will be an increase because they're usually.
And I see you put town car maintenance now its own.
Town car maintenance now has its own line. Um last year we had, or this past year, we had to put new um new tires on the town car. We previously weren't using the town car on a daily basis, but now that Sean's on board, um he's he's using it, so. So it would be nice to actually have a new line where we can take our gas out of that line, do the tie.
And those things. So makes sense. Makes sense.
Um so that went up, you know, like I said, minimal name.
Materials and supplies.
Materials and supplies stayed flat. Um and then the new lines for the good car. Um and then you did write a little bit of that, but it went down ever so slightly. We're good?
Yep.
Town clerk. Um Ray just says up eleven point one five. Why not three? So um it's twofold.
Okay.
One is uh last year, she, we have three elections this year.
Yes.
So we accounted for um last year she was being budgeted. Um if you look at my note on the side, um.
Get your notes on it.
Yeah, so last year she'd be budgeting her for twenty three hours a week. This year we're budgeting her for twenty five hours a week. Um she is also, if you can see, wanted to go up to thirty dollars an hour. Um I told her that I was not comfortable with that number, although I would present it to the board selectmen. And so I have her built in, that thirty four eight thirteen is a three percent increase like all of the other employees. It's just the additional hours per week for the elections um with the increase.
Okay, okay.
This year we only have one election and next year we have, we have three.
We have three?
Yeah, because you have a primary and.
Town.
Town, primary and state. State primary and then the state. Um so like I said, I I did a little research myself, um and I think her thirty dollars an hour request is high. And it actually doesn't look bad, but again, because I would present it to the board.
So the twenty seven eighty five that you have on here. In your little notes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
That is the three percent. When you see. On the left, town clerk.
Yeah.
Twenty seven eighty five, twelve fifty.
Very top line of that page.
I was gonna say, I don't think, never been for notes.
I still have.
Okay.
Somebody copied it actually to yours. There you go. Oh, yes, that is, yes, sorry. I'm looking at the right side, you're looking at the left side.
You think it's on the right side.
I don't either. The yellow, you're looking at the yellow now.
Yeah, we're running in yellow.
Oh, okay, so the notes are just mine. So the twenty seven eighty five is the three percent.
You got it, yes.
And that's thirty four eight eight one.
That's thirty four eight.
Okay. And that just accounted for the extra hours due to the election, to the election, yeah, okay, allows full time weeks, that's fine.
Yeah. Uh Jethi found clerk, we kept it zero because she doesn't have one.
Right, yeah.
Um Verizon cellphone, we kept that. That's gonna be based on expenditures. Uh travels, dues, conferences, she bumped up the town and the clerk students by thirty bucks.
Yep.
Um and then she also bumped up the annual conferences and seminars by two hundred dollars um because that is more relative of what the cost of hotels um now. Um contracted services, um everything stayed basically the same except for the uh clerk works. Um that's our annual fee for next year. It went up by the, you know.
Sure.
Uh materials and supplies um went up to the six hundred. That is due to the elections and also the purging, the new purging requirements for the checklist, so we, yeah, send those. Um for that.
Um.
So.
She looks like she's almost on target for revenue, motor vehicle revenue.
She should be. She she literally hits, you know, for the next month and a half. Okay, we'll be, we'll be close. We'll be right on target.
Yeah. Okay.
We good?
We're good.
Uh tax collector, you'll see um most of this day flat, so um we have last year, um we have the three percent increase for the cola. Um you'll see that we are under. Um right now, all of the money, uh we don't, we're not separating out her motor vehicle hours versus her tax collect hours. She works on Tuesdays and Thursdays, her normal schedule, and we're not breaking it out between motor vehicle and she just does both hours more.
Right, right, right.
Um so I don't know if that's a line that we wanna circle back to, if we want to reduce it, because obviously we're not using it to the capacity, but I will say over these next few weeks, she will work closer to a uh I don't wanna say full time hours, but because of tax bills coming in. So even though it looks like we've only spent the eighteen five, that's gonna bump up.
It's gonna be a lot more.
The next year, right, because.
So it's on fifty percent.
And it's only a week, you know, like the whole tax bill has only been out for a week and I know that last week compared to you know, this week compared to last week, um was already almost double her hours, so she.
Okay.
I would leave it as is, we find it need to.
Yeah, we can circle back.
We can be closer to the.
Recommend you.
Sure.
But can be.
Um. Annual conferences, the dues, we brought that down slightly. Um she, now that she is kind of certainly focusing on her tax collector duties, she's not going to the town quarter concerts anymore, so we're just budgeting for only the tax collective.
Perfect.
Um contracted services, the only thing she did bump up a little bit by a thousand bucks was the tax billing services and that's what we paid for mailing home limited postage and whatnot, so um it went up slightly.
Postage went up in the number of.
And the number of bills.
Yields.
Yes.
So she's at least spent about half of that budget.
Because we haven't paid for the tax billing yet.
Thank you, okay. That's what I assumed.
Yes, yeah, perfect. And then she also did bump up uh the toner um slightly for materials and supplies, but that seems to always be increasing.
Oh, constant.
Constant, I just.
Sort of summon one, holy cow, we're jumping, that is crazy.
But I mean, overall, she.
The whole budget's only at fourteen twenty four.
Yeah.
Forty nine bucks, so. Elections, this one jumped hugely.
This one jumped hugely, but that's because we went from having one election last year to three elections next year. So everything pretty much tripled. New um um voting machines?
Yes.
New voting machines. Um so I do have um the quote.
It's same.
Um I do have a quote for that. Uh the new voting machine itself is actually thirteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, but because we currently have voting works uh machine, they're giving us like a rebate um off of the new machine. So the total cost wasn't only gonna be that, the the six thousand three hundred versus the thirteen five that we reported for the machine, but. A rebate because we already have their.
Is there any state money or where the capital money?
No. I think that would have been run around. I think that was been run around over the last few years, where the town clerks association were really lobbying, that if you're gonna make us get these, our machine.
Unfunded mandate.
Unfunded mandate, that you should love shipping in for it, I think. The the rebate that we're getting is part of maybe the state's negotiation on that, if that would, we already had a voting works machine, that we could get a discount, but no, there is no state funding of that discount.
Does anybody wanna buy the old ones so they can fix the action?
I know, okay.
Um so it's less than, so we went from one election to three and the total is less than three times last year, so.
With the new machine.
With the new machine, yeah, if we didn't have the new machines in there, it would be significant, you know, so. But I think we wanna, we want the new machines, you know.
Oh, no question. Legal. Um.
You have an asterisk next to coding and printing ballots, which is zero, how can that be zero?
It's now included in the maintenance and coding package underneath the voting works tabulator, do you see?
Yeah.
Um we used to have to pay for that individually.
Yeah.
And now it's part of the um, i- i- it's it's the fourteen hundred dollars that you see under, I didn't wanna. Screw things up, so those lines will be changed next year in the budget, but I didn't wanna take them out and put them in.
Gotcha, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that fourteen hundred dollars replaces the seventeen.
Gotcha.
Well, that's huge, I mean.
Yeah.
We were spending seventeen fifty and now it's gonna be fourteen hundred.
Maybe seventeen fifty for one election, fourteen hundred for three, so that's a huge difference.
That's huge, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, I think it's a win for us overall, going with the new machines.
And the maintenance contract for the tabulator, tabulator is the. Machine itself, we don't have to pay for that anymore, I assume after we buy it, like, long year, we'll go back onto a maintenance.
It's part of that maintenance and coding, that fourteen hundred.
Excellent.
Yeah, the annual package, the annual cost.
Well, it would be, well, the ADA programming too, so it would actually be twenty-six hundred.
Yes.
Total. For three elections instead of seventeen fifty so far.
Well, it's the seventeen fifty plus. The seven fifty fifty. Oh, right, yeah, so our annual, okay. All right. Legal, everybody's favorite, right, um so.
This looks.
Good. I know, so I did reduce the budget, um it is kind of a an unknown, um we do still have one um. Major lawsuit next year that we were going to uh go to trial in um in February, I bumped that up, knowing that we spent. Over. Year, we didn't need to go to a little bit of a buffer for us, um you know, I mean, we didn't go many days this year, we just never actually. Um and then. Anymore, general legal, I brought that down too, we didn't spend nearly as much this year as we did last year. I would say, you know, I mean, yeah, it's enough. Rid of that for, I'm fine with it.
I agree.
First of all, a lot of these numbers we're gonna have to circle back to, um because we are in the midst of CBA negotiations with the uh police department. So a lot of these figures have potential to change, so I kind of put placeholders in for now to kind of make it look flat to see what the overall budget would be, but. Uh I will say that um negotiations this year are are gonna be. Different than in years past.
We'll talk about it in a couple of.
Okay.
Okay, you're good. Some zeros in here, I don't know.
Like return contribution group two, I know that's right, that's.
Yep.
Uh part of the negotiation.
Correct.
And you're leaving that blank right at zero.
Let's just skip this one.
Yeah, I would just skip this one, like I said, this is gonna be.
All right.
This is gonna significantly.
Positive, yeah, like. Sixty thousand dollars down, it's like, oh, you know.
That's.
Almost, but the whole return contribution budget was.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't wanna go through the motions of putting hypothetical numbers in there, but that just creates.
Got it, good, good idea.
Um planning, um so you'll see for the planning wages, I did bring that. Take out the overall planning budget, um in the event that that's um we get a qualified applicant and we have to negotiate wages. Um recording secretary, I kept the same, land use coordinator, um that looks like it's up a significant amount, I don't know why, because it is the three percent across the board really, but. So I don't know if that is a transition from the previous land use coordinator to the. I'm just not really doing more.
Gotcha.
Um was a year in July, so it might have been what we had previously budgeted versus what she ended up being hired on.
Gotcha, yeah.
And then planning assistant, that, I have that a placeholder line in there, it's budgeted at zero, but not knowing like how the. Planner position's going to make out yet, I I kept it uh as a placeholder, so that will have to be revisive as well, okay. Um training and expenses, I left it at the fifteen hundred, it's pretty consistent with what we're actually spending, so um. Same with dues and membership dues, I I kept that flat, um consistent with what we're spending. Uh contracted services, um it, that did go up slightly, our um short-term uh rental management program is going to go up slightly. And also our map editing and uh annual uh color zoning maps, we're we're spending more on that than, we're asking them to update on more than. Previously how we only were supposed to do it once a year, and now we're doing it kind of semi-annually, um.
What was our um short-term rental revenue, do you know?
Uh it's at the bottom, I believe.
Oh, it's on the back, right.
Yeah.
Uh thirty-three.
Yeah, but so it's always a weird crossover of years because we are having, we we start collecting the renewals right in December, so we'll get. Another ten thousand, I'm guessing, in this next month or so, or close to it, eight, I think. And then so if someone goes into the previous year's revenue, yeah, yeah, but it's, yeah, here. Um but I'll tell you what we have threatened them, that we are not renewing with them, and that we Jade is setting up um. Um some webinars with other uh um other vendors that do some things.
How long did?
It's still going. It's strange though, because this year, there are a lot more, there are, back there, none of them, right, and once they did go through, it was like duplicate, duplicate payments, and then we'll refund people. This year, it's like fifty percent of our revenue, it was fifty percent of our, and we pretty much have told them that we are renewals up in April, that we will not renew in April with that. Because the customer service has just been horrendous, and we are having the same issues over and over and over again, and then. So. Um we'll see, like I said, Jade has a couple of little companies that she's reached out to, um to get like a, you know, a a demo of their software.
Right.
Um printing materials and supplies, I kept that flat. Uh office equipment, fire system cabinet, I kept that flat, I don't necessarily know if we need it, we have absorbed some from the PD downstairs. Um there's also some at the medical center that we were told we could go look at and wanted to, if we if we wanted to look at them, I mean, it is nice to get a brand new one that we know. Operates, but I love it in there.
We've used ones in the past.
We've taught users.
Yeah.
Just send them on the air trip down and pick them up.
You went, I went on my truck, and you bought a couple.
Yeah. Like I said, we we definitely have absorbed a bunch from the PD.
They didn't, they didn't give me fireproof ones from right though. Do we, what do we need for fireproof ones, I know we obviously were still need because there's a lot of stuff to be kept.
Yeah.
I mean.
Fireproof saves. It it's kind of hard, right now, all of our fire, all of our cabinets are bursting into scenes, but we don't really have any space to put any more cabinets at the time, until we move downstairs.
Right, right.
Uh once we move downstairs, I think we'll have a better understanding of like how many we actually really need. There. First thing. We're conscious of. Of the weight load.
Cure the ones at the clinic while they're still available.
I I I told that, I told John, the chief of the fire ambulance, to just let me know whenever he went over there and starting to give you them out, because we'll try to put them downstairs.
Exactly, yeah, okay.
Yep. Um so overall, that budget looks like it went up significantly, but it really has to do with the wages and kind of the unknown, the competition.
Yeah, it's like a thirty-seven thousand, almost thirty-eight thousand.
Your your offsetting revenue is.
Yes.
Up forty-six percent.
That's based on the new permit fee structure that we implemented.
Fantastic.
Which is very nice.
Well, it should be, I mean, that's.
I mean, we're we're taking on a a bigger workload in the planning department and having that revenues kind of offset the, you know, additional wages and whatnot, um definitely helps.
Great, thank you.
All right, uh town hall, town electricity, so um we are. We're under right now, so we can probably reduce that, bring into our headiest uh electricity-using months, um with the lights and 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 whatnot, so um. I I expect by the time we look at this again in December, or.
You have the day, take a little bit out.
We might get a little bit out, uh but I think we're gonna be much closer.
We, yeah, 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 makes sense, same, I'm sure.
Same with all things.
Just people are, wouldn't the electric, so your rates went up in August.
They went up.
Yes.
This past year, yes, I can remember.
But, yeah, so we paid whatever, seven, eight months under the lower rate, not, that was huge, but.
Yeah, it was a slight increase.
Just remember that.
Yeah. Definitely, right, next year will be the full twelve months.
At the higher rate, right?
Um. Materials and supplies, help utility supplies, um I kept that, we we are a little bit under, but um I think by the time we get to the end of the year, we'll we'll be closer. Jane's pretty good about keeping our. But look at that, um find things unless we actually need to, so. Hey, I believe, and that's staying the same, so that no longer needs to be highlighted, uh so. Everything else is staying flat, other than the AC heating, heating unit replacements, so we have yet to purchase one for this year. Um we were waiting until close up to the end of the year to see where the budget kind of um fell. Um because the fifteen thousand five that we have budgeted is nowhere close to what it's going to cost us to purchase it.
When we got the quote.
We're talking things and we see it, it's it's the units, again, it's the, one of the.
And we've only purchased three, I thought we had, I thought we did four.
Maybe this year was gonna be.
This year was the four.
This year was, yeah, okay, thank you. Um but when we got the quote from John Baker earlier, or Rock Country Medical, earlier at the year, he told us that it's gonna be closer to thirty, he was thinking.
For one.
For one, with the installation, yeah, you know. Yeah, so we.
Terrorists.
So it's the town, so we held off on buying it, we were closer into the year, now that we are um. We're pretty good in that budget line item, and overall, um I think it's okay to go ahead and give the re-light purchase one out of this year's budget.
Yeah.
Um but. But I guess the question is, how much do we wanna budget for this year, if it was thirty this year?
At least today.
Yeah, but I think we were trying to budget, if it's in the operating budget, chip away at that, not go in these capital reserves. Uh so I put a placeholder of twenty in there for now, um I think it's, you know, in between the fifteen and the thirty, um just so we have some fun in there.
I wonder if we should do such a whole thing, I mean, it's, if it's thirty thousand this year, it's not gonna be. Less than thirty thousand next year, I I don't believe so, I mean, unless, I mean.
So this and the whole budget is up fifty-five.
Bottom line. However, if we have enough, we have, we budgeted fifteen, we have the thirty in here to pay the thirty.
Yes.
If we budget twenty, theoretically, we have the thirty. Next year.
No, we have fifteen in and up.
We have fifteen in there now.
We're gonna buy one before the end of the year.
For thirty.
For thirty.
We have an extra, if you will, fifteen thousand in this budget that was spent.
No, we're gonna spend it, like, we're gonna, we're not on the end.
We're gonna, we're gonna. We're gonna, oh, it's gonna make us over.
It's gonna make us open and buy.
Okay, never mind, yeah, like three, three thousand. We're gonna eat it somewhere else, we're gonna. Skill from it somewhere.
How's this? You said the new one came in at third, we have fifteen five budgeted for it in this year that we're in.
Yes, we'll need another fifteen.
We need another fifteen this year, and you're gonna take it out of the difference between the seventy-nine budgeted and, or at thirty-nine right now, so we have forty thousand dollars in that budget for the next month.
Yes, yes.
It was, it wanted to pay out the rest of the bills. Are you comfortable with the twenty, or do you want, would you rather have the thirty in there so you know you're covered?
I mean, I would rather have the thirty, but my thought process was, because I know in years past, when I first came on board, you were budgeting for. You were budgeting for the unit in operating and the installation in cover reserves or vice versa, you were, you were splitting the difference between the two.
Correct, yeah.
That's what I was just thinking that I would do, I buy the unit with the.
And when we started, when we started four years ago, we started for five years ago, buying, we did skip a year, I know one year we skipped for, I don't remember the reason, but. They told us then, they they all needed to be replaced right now, and we decided to stay here, so we're already on borrowed time with the last three.
Right now, we've still only spent thirty-nine thousand out of seventy-nine thousand, twenty thousand dollars, still the.
Well, I mean, I think a a a huge chunk of that thirty-nine is the fifteen five that we haven't spent yet for the the unit.
And two months of.
Two months.
Electrification, yeah.
Is there any deal with the um installation?
I don't know.
My thought is just to spend, overspend that one line item. Budget fifteen five across thirty, still buy it.
Yeah.
Uh because you're right, you did budget this over time, and then we'll drag that out longer than.
Right.
It's just, it's just bad, yeah, and and let's not skip another year, let's let's.
No, we're getting it shot.
Boarding, I don't know if they can do it this summer, but get it in, get it in here, and let's budget thirty for next year, if that's what it's gonna cost.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, if the, if the tariffs make that price, I mean. That whole extra fifteen thousand is not gonna be tariffs, it's gonna be general. Price increases.
Okay.
So it's not gonna drop back to fifteen, let's budget the thirty, and it's only twenty-five. That'll be great.
Uh this is where a crystal ball would come in handy.
Yeah, like I said, when he gave us that quote, you know, I think he gave it to us in April, or, you know, May, springtime, and was like, whoa, we 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 can't do this by now, we gotta make sure that. We have money in the budget at the end of the year, so.
All right.
So I reached out to Terry, I reached out to um Mr. Khan and asked him if he um had any recommendations or increases that he would like to include in the budget. He told me he didn't believe so, but that he'd get back to me, um and. He told me he didn't believe so, but that he'd get back to me, um, and he has to get back to me, so I put everything in, that's fine.
Did we have any offsetting revenue?
Um, so we found out through our CIP process that at one point in time, the towns voted to have all the offsetting revenue. To go back to the, uh, perpetual care fund, and so we don't actually get any revenue in the general fund. So I took it out of there because it wasn't a true reflection of anything.
What's the, um, aspect beside installation of foundations, which is the, uh.
The backup rental. There's an asterisk and under contract services. So pardon, that must have been installation of multiple foundations. Yeah, insurance.
Insurance is what insurance is, fortunately with Primax, and, you know, as long as it's expensive, Primax is really good to us. As far as they're extremely easy to work with, they're super responsive, they, um, not only do, you know, not only are great customer service wise. But they do Primax conference every year, they do free trainings, they do a bunch of other services where it's not this true property.
This is much better than DC point school care. With the, they did the internal assessments on all of the, um, schools they, they underfunded themselves by like thirty million or something. Little it's one month same payment that they notified like now and it's due in two months, it's like two hundred five thousand.
Yeah.
Is that is that like a pools fund or like a?
Yeah.
Not a private trust.
And looking back, there it went, school care, there there were some years that were, um, like zero eight, some of like two percent. But like the highest one was nine, or something, and then this one was like, okay, we, because of the. Current climate, uh, everybody has to do a huge payment. There are some schools that I know of. Not far that had to literally, um, release teachers, staff members to come up with the money to.
Well, we also think this is also having the P D on our. Property liability insurance as well.
I mean, compared to what's happening in other places.
Third word.
Less than twenty thousand dollar increase on insurance right now for what we have is not bad.
Yeah.
Well, there's nothing we can now do about this one, so excuse me.
Yeah.
Yeah, please, please.
Please pay.
Thank you. Yeah, me too.
Well, this one's gonna change.
Only, oh, no.
This one's gonna change because payroll right now is flat.
Oh, right.
Oh, right.
You don't make any estimates of what you're carrying.
I'm not making any estimates.
Do you wanna skip this one then and come back to it?
Let's go through the rest of the bucket.
Yeah, I think we can go through the rest of it, um, but payroll obviously will will change. Um, so we'll 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 skip over payroll for right now, um, the cost of phones and cell phone system, e-tickets. That is the annual price that we, um, are under contract for. Do's training and training supplies that he, uh, he kept flat. Um, I did ask him, um, that is where some of the, um, new firearm funding, remember we. Bunch of extra plus is gonna come, um, go forward to new firearms.
Gotcha.
Was there a lawsuit? I don't know that.
Um, nothing I'm aware of yet.
You're saying because it's under spent, he's gonna spend.
Yes.
Portion this year.
Yes.
We're not encumbering those, he's gonna.
He they're they're already on order. Yeah, he, they ordered them the day after we gave them the free.
Perfect.
Yeah. But they, I think they said.
Do you remember the total of that? I wanna say it was like sixteen or seventeen.
But it's like thirteen month year, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Contracted services, um, you know, you just signed a new police prosecutor agreement tonight, that went down by a thousand. Uh, CSI remained flat, um, our Conway office leads went up a little bit, um. He brought down radio repairs, the total service care, that's our, um, computer contract, he's meeting with Katie on Thursday as well, so we'll have updated numbers for that on Thursday. Um. Civic Plus, they are getting, um, that went up slightly, you'll see, uh, but they are getting a new, we're gonna get a new rave system. Um, which will allow us to not only have to do the, um, emergencies, we can do it for for anything. So if a road shut down, or someone doesn't have power, or whatever it is, it's not just for emergency purposes, it can be used, um, tab lock. So I'll be able to get a username and password, and I'll be able to send out updates in addition to the P D. Uh, overall, that that total line of contracted services just went down. Electricity, this, we have to remind ourselves that last year we were making estimates, we were what heating and electricity was gonna cost in the new building. And unfortunately, we, um, we did not fare well in electricity, but we did fare well in propane.
Well, part of it too is construction, electricity, yeah, I mean, we went for a while there with the lights on full blast.
So it might go down.
Right, yes, it's gonna, the, next year's budget is gonna be our good.
A true, a true reflection of what we're actually using.
And running some of that equipment, sun and whatnot.
Oh, yes. Yeah, um, you know, but it is also a twenty four hour.
Yeah. It's gonna be hard, again, this budget to, we're not gonna be exact with this one, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so where we didn't fare well in electricity, we did fare well. So we're under the propane, uh, I did leave it, I mean, I brought it down by a thousand dollars, but, um, we do have two more big bills coming in, um, for this month and next month. They have two, uh, I think they have two bigger than that, I think they have two thousand, uh, underground, right, am I right?
But also.
And then underground.
Underground, yeah. Last January, February, March, it wasn't, there was no doors, there were no windows, it was plywood, it wasn't, yeah, so. Inside, so it was still heated.
Well, and like, those are, you know.
Right, right, so the propane again is gonna be a.
Um, the building maintenance. We think that will even itself and this year's. Uh, fuel and maintenance, we kept that, we are under, we have November bill, we'll have December bill coming in, so we'll get those to what we have pushed it. Uniforms, uh, we kept flat. And similar to equipment, we kept flat, um, that is also where some of that funding for the new firearms is gonna come from as well. It looks like we have a, you know. Um, the matching funds for the grant is also flat, and then, um, uh, the revenue, see, I have to still calculate.
Why do we get so much in the highly safety force service grant?
Um. One of them, one of them was the, um, it 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 was, it it was, it was the, um. No, it's the, what did we buy, we bought, um, we got a grant to buy a a piece of equipment for just, can't remember, but.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
You know, not, it was like a. So all that grant revenue is in that.
In there, okay, okay, and why is, is it just with two more months to go on the SRO?
Yeah, because, to be honest, the SRO, the first, you know, you don't get anything during summer, and then the first billing for the SRO is, um. It is only, uh, two months out of the three, so that will bump up by the end of the year, we'll get the one up.
I can tell.
And and this is the last year of offsetting revenue for the SRO?
Correct. Yeah, it was three years, we have to keep the SRO for at least five. And and we have that degree within school.
How come that? Shouldn't the, shouldn't the SAU money be in there as revenue?
So in that offsetting revenue line, it says SRO grant. That.
Okay.